All right, good evening, everybody. I'd call the special call meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, August 8, 2016 to order. So, if you'll please call the roll and make general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the August 8, 2016, special call meeting. I will waive the reading of the rules and general announcements, and move on to the roll call. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Coons.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt is absent for the record. Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. I know much of you are here for our work session, which will start in just a few minutes, but we've got one item of business we need to take care of. So, so if you'll please call the next item, which is approval of the agenda.
Next item is approval of the meeting agenda. Agenda item number sixteen one seven two.
I have a motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Thurman, second bid. Councilmember Longoria, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. You have your public comment.
I do.
Okay, all right, we'll move on to new business. So, if you could call the items.
Consideration of a corrected intergovernmental agreement for the provision of election services between Fulton County, Georgia, and the City of Milton, Georgia. Agenda item number sixteen one seven three, Mr. Ken Gerard.
Ma'am, Mr. Council, thank you very much. You have at this special call meeting consideration of a corrected copy of the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Milton, Fulton County, and the Fulton County Board of Elections and Registrations with respect to the Board of Elections and Registrations' conduct of the City of Milton November referendum with respect to the general obligation bond. The City Council may recall that you had previously adopted a version of this intergovernmental agreement. Regrettably, that was a version that did not contain some very minor tweaks that are actually in the version that was supposed to be in front of you. We are doing this tonight merely at a housekeeping measure, and so when, in fact, we ask you to make a motion to approve this corrected agreement, we are going to ask that that motion declare that this intergovernmental agreement replaces and supersedes the version that may have been previously approved by the City Council. I will tell you that this, the version you have in front of you, is in fact the version that has been approved by Fulton County as well as the Board of Elections and Registrations. And I will also tell you that the call of election for that November ballot is going out either on August 9th or 10th, so it's imminent. We need to get this done today. And also, I will tell the Council what I think you already know, which is we've had some good news with respect to the costs associated with the election in November. And I believe there may be a Commissioner, Commissioner Housman may have been responsible for that. But that is, is that they are going to remove actual the costs in the IGA. And I will tell you, Councilmembers, rather than go through on an IGA that everybody else has already approved and start marking up the payment shifting, we're going to resolve it by way of just letters between us indicating what our responsibilities are going to be. So, that's very good news, and there may be some of you that share some credit for that. But, Mr. Mayor, all I'm asking this evening is for there to be a motion by the Council to approve the IGA at your stations, and that the approval of this IGA, this corrected IGA, will replace and supersede the prior IGA on this topic.
Okay, any questions? All right, I'll look up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve a corrected intergovernmental agreement for the provision of election services between Fulton County, Georgia, and the City of Milton, Georgia. Agenda item number sixteen dash one seven three, and that this, this particular item before us here on August 8, 2016, replaces and supersedes the previous agreement for the City Council.
Second motion. Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Coons, second from Councilmember Luss. Just want to say, you know, to kind of your point. Yeah, I know Karen had talked to Councilmember, or Commissioner Housman, and I talked to the chairman, and just, you know, kudos to the county, and, you know, talked about just level-headed government where we all decide, you know, our citizens are paying for the cost of the election. By adding this bond on there, it's really not adding, other than some paper, it's not adding any more work. So, kudos and thanks to not only the chairman, but Commissioner Housman and Ellis and the rest of the Fulton County guys to work with us and treat our citizens fair. So, that's my spiel. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, let's conclude, so.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay. Welcome, everybody, to the August 8 special call joint work session. Now, work sessions are more informal setting to update the Council on business items. No votes will be taken on work session items. Tonight, there are seven items on the agenda. Public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you are required to fill out a public comment card and turn it into the city clerk. Public comment will be allowed for a total of ten minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of this item. Once the item is called, no other public cards will be accepted. So, do we have any public cards for item number one?
We have RZ fifteen eighteen, which is two, and then one that just says, "Roll View Shed."
Okay. All right, would you would please call the item, agenda item number one?
Mr. Mayor, just a point of order. I think we've got a few minutes till six o'clock.
Oh, I'm sorry, you know what I mean.
I think we, we might want to.
Trying to be efficient.
Didn't want to get in your way. I was thinking, I get it, but we might want to wait and just make sure everybody's here.
Okay. Yeah, I apologize. I'm just moving right into the meeting, but we do formally have five more minutes before, and I guess, point of order, we really don't even need to be discussant it until six, right?
Right, right.
Make sure everybody has their time.
The meeting's been called to order, but we'll just need to, we just need to sit.
Okay. Well, I'll tell you what, Ken, if you would pass the stamp to Steve. Steve, if you would pass the snack jar around to the public.
I will say, though, it's really nice when both the city and county realize we represent the same constituents and that we're doing what's best for them with the election.
We're sharing the laws here.
She called me a flight.
I'm trying to be good. This chocolate here, the Snickers. Oh, don't keep them down here.
And I'm so proud of you.
Where were you?
Let's just call me. She said, "Well, I'm not going to take this." I said, "Okay."
That's a great place to live, of course.
Yeah.
Hence my move here.
It's stunning, it's clean, it's.
Oh, look, handout. How exciting.
Oh, my goodness.
And we need to start really, really over.
I think just recognize that you already, yeah, just recognize you already started.
All right. Can everybody hear me? Good evening, and as most of you know that we're here, we've already recognized in the fact that we have started the meeting, and, but we have waited till six o'clock to get into the meat of it. So, it's all right. So, if you could please sound the first agenda item.
First item is discussion of capital improvement elements, CIE, Ms. Michelle McIntosh-Ross.
Good evening. As you know, we, as Milton, we approved impact fee ordinance last October in the fall. And with that, there are some state requirements for annual updates of the capital improvement element and the work program items that are impact fee eligible. So, we are here tonight to discuss the draft annual update for the CIE, and to seek direction to move forward to next week to submit, to approve a resolution to transmit the document to Georgia DCA and the Atlanta Regional Commission for their review and comment. And then after that, sometime in October, October 17th is our schedule, we would come back to seek approval of the final document. Our impact fee consultants are here, Ross and Associates, to lead the discussion, and, and he's available for questions tonight, not next week. So, if you have questions, we want to get them in tonight. And so, I'll just turn it over to Bill Ross.
Thank you, Michelle. I'm Bill Ross with Ross Associates. We're located in, in Atlanta. This is something you will see every year. Being a impact fee community, you're required to submit a so-called, they call it an annual update. It's not much of an update at all, but you file this, this annual report. It has two parts. There's a financial report section, and then there's an update to your short, your five-year short-term work program. The latter, you add another year and chop off last year so that you've always got a rolling five-year community work program. And you're probably familiar with the community work program because it's part of your comprehensive plan also. The financial report basically says, what did you get? What did you do with it? How much did you keep? How much did you spend? What did you spend on it? Now, because this report contains the last fiscal year, you didn't start collecting impact fees till about three days after that, or maybe five days after that fiscal year. So, you probably noticed on the tables in this report lots of blanks because you didn't collect any impact fees on those, those, in, in that fiscal year. Next annual report, you'll, you'll be reporting fiscal year 2016 at that time. But what we did do is go ahead and structure all of these tables and get the list of projects in there and the amount of impact fee eligibility and whatnot so that the model would already be in place. Staff can take this role over if they get tired of paying me to, to, to come and do it for you, and start filling these, these forms out themselves. I want to emphasize that this is based on the capital improvements element that you adopted last year. And that stays in place until such time as you need to, to revise it. You'd go through a CIE amendment process, send the state a new version for review, and when that comes back, adopt it at that time. So, this one is, is based on your, your current CIE. If you make any major changes, you'll need a new CIE. Well, it just depends on when you need to change it, because only you will, you will know that, and the staff will keep track, keep track of it. If I can answer any questions about this, as Michelle indicated, at your next meeting, there'll be a public hearing, which is required by the state. You will then transmit, adopting a, a resolution to transmit the report to ARC. ARC sends a copy to, to DCA. It goes as a draft. That's why it says draft on the, on the report. Once the ARC and DCA have made whatever comments they care to make and whatever resolution there may be, you will have a final version approved by the state that you can then adopt. And you, and that's not a public hearing. That's just an action by you. And depending on the comments from the state, there may be some minor changes here and there. They'll just be incorporated. We don't have to keep going through the review process over and over and over again.
Any questions for Bill? Okay. Nice to meet you. Thank you, sir. Okay, do we, any other questions for staff, Michelle? Karen?
We haven't actually spent any of our funds that we have received thus far from impact fees yet, have we?
Not that I know of. I know it's been, we've looked at the impact fee eligible items, and we're working our accounting to fund those with spreadsheets and all. So, I don't know that we've actually paid for any items with the impact fee money, but we've allotted.
And I'm assuming along with this next year's budget, we will be seeing information concerning what has been collected and what we plan to spend it on?
Oh, yeah. Yes. Yeah.
Michelle, while you're up there. All of these separate budgets for the different departments, parks, fire, law enforcement, and the others. You have allocated amounts for, starting in 2016 and ending in thirty-five, and then twenty-two, ending in thirty-five. How will those be allocated on an annual basis, I guess?
Yeah, every year, we'll look at them again to make, add it to those dates if necessary. Is there any specifics on that? That's as far as I know. We'll look at them every year and make adjustments to those dates.
We don't have to spend them every year.
Right.
We don't have to spend the money after you have seven years in which we've covered funds. So, we can literally save the money as, for a couple of years before we decide to allocate it to a specific project. But that will come out through the budgetary process. But we'll co-collect the money, and then those are the projects we've identified that are eligible for impact fees. And so, some years, we may spend less than other years committing on the project than we are in the long run of that project.
I got it. Thank you.
Okay, sorry.
Bill Ross again. This report is designed for and answers questions raised by DCA. I don't want anybody in this room to believe this is real. It's not, not real, but what happens is you, in your annual budgeting process, you'll decide what you're going to spend money on and when, and those could be revisions to your whole program, including where's the money going to come from that's not coming from impact fees. You may also be faced with some interim funding things. The impact fees come in rather slowly. You don't get the last fee until the last house is built twenty years from now. But in some cases, you'll have some interim funding issues. You want to go ahead and get a fire station built. You want to go ahead and get something done. You don't have all the impact fees in yet. You can use interim financing to build what you want to build, and then as the impact fees come in, they transfer into the general fund or a bond fund or whatever to pay yourselves back for what you, what you've spent. The reality is much more complicated than this little report that DCA dreamed of. So, that's how it, that's how it happens in a, in a real-world kind of sense. You'll see it through the budgeting process every year.
Good explanation. Rick?
I notice on here, we've got some projects that have already been completed, like going back to 2014. Were those just put on there for example? Say, because it's saying max funding from impact fees, and obviously, the project is done. Was that just as an example for public works to say, had we had impact fees, this is what you could have maxed, because these are closed projects?
Yes, and you can, those projects are impact fee eligible. Even though they may be completed, you can recoup the money that was spent on those projects that benefited future development. And that's why we carry them forward. They're listed in that CIE I mentioned, and they'll still be listed even when they're, when they're actually paid off entirely. But even though the project is complete, the, the city can transfer funds as you get them, and as you desire, can transfer them into the general fund or whatever fund, pay yourselves back for the capacity you created for, for new development.
So, that's just an accounting, accounting option?
Exactly. Okay. All right, thank you, Bill. Thanks, Michelle. All right, so if you could please call the second item.
Our next item is discussion of RZ fifteen eighteen to amend the AG one agricultural district, chapter sixty-four, article six, division two. Ms. Caffey Field.
Just a brief information. I did pass out to all of you a revised, the, on the AG one. And, and as you know, all the changes are the same for all the zoning, residential zoning difference. I did pass out to you the AG one as well as the change to the rural view shed. Because in there, in yellow, are the changes that you requested at the last meeting that we had when we discussed this particular topic. So, I didn't want those changes to be lost. So, they are in yellow in that document that I passed out to you. So, they've been captured, okay? At the last meeting, you did ask for a work session with the planning commission members to discuss their comments and viewpoints as it relates to the proposed changes. And the board of planning commission members are here this evening to have that discussion with you. So, Mr. Mayor, would you ever wish, I just want to sit down for a while, and then I'll be available to answer.
Okay, I want to thank you guys from the planning commission for being here. Do we have any public comment?
We do have two on that first, on that second item.
I'll go ahead and hear the public comment, don't worry. So, we discuss things, we might, can answer.
And the first one is Laura Bentley.
Hi there. Laura Bentley, 2500 Bethany Church Road. Thank you so much for this opportunity to have this work session. It's a good thing that we're taking our time to really get this right. I think it's important to, it's important to me, but I think it's also important to a lot of citizens. The rural view shed is like a green space corridor, and I handed out some pictures because the more you look at it, the more you think about it, and the more you appreciate it. And so, I thought some pictures might be helpful to your discussions here tonight. In the pictures, you're going to see, I hope, what we can all agree are view sheds that we just do not need to touch. They should be considered do-not-disturb view sheds. We have some other great view sheds that might have needed some improvements. And then we have some view sheds where you're driving by and you go, "What the heck happened here?" And so, I think we have an opportunity now to really look at this ordinance, get it right so that we can continue to be the community that's known. People come here just to drive around. So, with that, I would like to go on the very first page. The reason I included this, this is a picture over at Bethany's Rest. This is about ten years old. It's a mature view shed that I think is beautiful and could probably be used as an example of something when we have a new AG one development. I would really like to see this rather than the backs of homes. The next set of pictures is the new development on Nixon-Freemenville. Definitely a view shed that has been disturbed, and we need to talk about how that happened and why it happened. I believe there was some kudzu there. So, that's an important topic in your, in your discussions. There were also some nice trees in the view shed, but they probably didn't qualify as Olympic athlete trees. But I still think we should keep them. Across the, the street, that bottom picture, that's the view shed across from Nixon-Freemenville. And I hope we can all agree that that is a no-improvement, don't-touch view shed. The next page is the Grove over at Ashton Woods, which I thought was a great example of a view shed that was enhanced. The, the existing oaks were used, and then that developer planted beautiful magnolia trees to screen the backs of the AG one homes. And the, the pea gravel trail is, I think, worked really nice there. So, that's kind of what you notice when you drive around, wow, that's a great example. Let's do that everywhere or do a variation of it everywhere. We don't want to be cookie cutter. The next set of pictures is Providence, well, Burt's not here yet, but this is Burt's neighborhood. Providence and Bethany, which I think is the most beautiful tree canopy in our city. And I certainly hope that that would be considered a, a no-improvement view shed. But I will point out, and I, I do like kudzu. I like kudzu more than orange dirt. There is a tree there that has kudzu on it, so that's another thing to talk about. But I'd hate to see that touched in any way. The next set of pictures is Blue Valley, which, this just makes me mad altogether because it's actually one of our most beautiful areas that has not turned out, I'm sure, the way we would all like. There's, there's a hideous-looking sign in the view shed. I think due to variances, we have swing sets in the view shed. We have some three-foot lelands. We have some three-foot lelands that are 10 feet apart, that are dying in the view shed. So we have a chance to, to fix this. And I'm just wondering why this one can't be like the Grove. The last picture is, there's corn in the view shed and there's pumpkins. And then there's horses. And I'm all for bona fide AG1 use in the view shed. Just as an aside, those horses, if you make people do plantings, they're going to eat them. And they're going to rub on them and they're going to knock them over. And so I think the horses should can be considered the plantings. So just some suggestions as you go about your business tonight. Please consider keeping the original language, which was 40-foot and undisturbed. Let's do a better job of enforcing the original view shed language, which would protect trees other than specimen inherited trees in the view shed. One suggestion would be that council and staff approve landscape designs for standardized plantings, which screen the backs of the new AG1 developments. Maybe you need to have a discussion about the removal of invasive plants. And maybe that needs to be done via a variant so that it's not left to one person to decide, you know, we're going to, we're going to take this view shed out because there was kudzu there. In favor of bona fide AG1 use in the view shed. And then finally, I'd like to, as soon as you all decide, we really need to get to educating the community about if they, if they have a view shed, what they can and can't do. And also the tree service companies that might come and cut down trees in the view shed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did you say we have two comments?
Yes, we have another one. And that's Mr. Cleveland Slater.
Cleveland Slater, 13670 Bethany Road. I handed out earlier, as she put some highlights on it. The first couple of sentences is our existing view shed ordinance. It's pretty simple. It says we have a 40-foot undisturbed buffer. And then it continues in the second sentence. It states where sparsely vegetated, replant the undisturbed buffer in a natural fashion. There was a lot of discussion about inability to plant in the undisturbed buffer. And that's why we needed to change the ordinance. So I want to, I want you to look at that language. And I, I can understand there may be some conflict between undisturbed and planting. But I think it's simply that it is undisturbed except but plantings that are required where we have a sparsely vegetated buffer. The second in red is a portion of the proposed text amendment. And the language there changed from a undisturbed buffer to a primary setback. And that is very, very different. Undisturbed is undisturbed. A setback, not sure what that means. It generally means you can't build in it. Paragraph A says no disturbance until the design of the rural view shed is approved by the city arborist. So it appears that we're moving from a undisturbed buffer to a designed buffer. And I think we want to think very carefully because those are very opposite extremes of our two options. Our, our multitude of options. And we really need to think about what's right and what we want to do. What do we do about invasive plants, right? We need to address that. We need to, we need to think about the right thing to do. We need to think about a standard where replantings is required. So the arborist doesn't have to say, I think you need to replant. There needs to be a defined standard that he has to plant to. So there's a lot of improvements, but there's also some things that we need to look at. One of the improvements is the requirement to install an orange tree safe fence. However, that tree safe fence is only required to protect three things. It protects the specimen trees, the Olympic athletes that we have in our, in our tree stands. It protects what is defined as a protected tree, which is a 15-inch or larger tree. And then heritage trees, which are trees that council has identified as special and deserve protection. So I want to illustrate the difference in the size of a two-inch tree. Here, eight inch, eight inch dogwoods or flowering trees are protected. Now, I don't know if I've ever seen an eight inch dogwood in my life. 15-inch protected trees would be protected and 27-inch heritage or specimen trees. So it has to be 27 inches or larger to be considered a specimen tree. And then it has to meet some other criteria as well. So whether it was a mistake or an oversight, as drafted now, there's a big difference between here and all of these trees. So what we're saying is these and larger don't matter. If it's flowering in this size, we'll save it. If it's this size, we'll save it. And if this size is a specimen, we'll, we'll save it. So I, I was a little hesitant to share my illustration, but I thought, you know, it's really kind of hard sometimes to, to get a, a understanding of how large some, some numbers are in isolation. So again, let's just think carefully about the decisions we make tonight. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. And City, do you have any more public comments?
That's awesome.
Okay. On this item, you would turn one in. We've got one here. I'm fine if you want to call that one, let's, the council.
My name is Julie Zonner Bailey. Good evening. I reside at 255 Hickory Flat Road. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say, welcome back to school, to all of the school kids that are in Fulton County and other counties. I hope for those of you that have school-led children, it was a good first day at school. And I appreciate the opportunity to address with you this evening some things that I share along with others, concerns about regarding AG1 enhancements. First of all, I want to applaud your collective efforts to make sure that we enhance our AG1 development standards. It's a great opportunity for our community to be able to embrace the things that all of us, even when we're on opposite sides of a particular issue. I think we all agree that conserving and preserving is really, really important. And there's some critical areas that we don't all agree on. But I think tonight, we're talking about things that hopefully we can all agree on. And it's just a function of how do we get those details into the legal requirements. I may not be going step by step on each of these in terms of where they fall. I just have some general comments. I'm going to leave it to you to decide if they're, where they need to be. But they all deal with AG1 enhancement, so if I'm out of order, forgive me. I, I want to echo the importance of the stronger tree save requirements. There's a few examples that were, gee, tough to see. One in particular that happened as recently as last week, and I saw it again tonight. And it disturbs me greatly, and that's in front of strawberry fields. And those trees were completely leveled. And in fact, ACE, I wrote it down because I drove by it as I was on my way here. ACE Tree Service, they're there today taking out more trees. It, it's like watching people whose lives have been lost. Because I kind of feel about trees that way. And I think many of us do. But we need to get to the bottom of how that happened. I don't know if it was an individual that just went against our tree ordinance or if that was part of transportation in, I don't know. But I would be remiss if I didn't say tonight and today, how disturbing that is. And nobody should have to drive by kind of the raping of our land. That's a strong word, but that's what I feel when I drive by it. And so I don't know how that happened, but I surely hope it doesn't continue to happen. And we got to get behind that. We got to get ahead of it because it destroys where we live and what we love. And people I don't even know, that I've never known, have sent me emails and calls and said, tell me how that happens. And I don't know, but I'll, I'll be happy to help find out. So that's just one example, along with Nixon-Freemenville, along with another example, Freemenville and Birmingham. We got to get ahead of this. I know we all feel that way, but every time we lose ground, we all lose ground. I, I feel very strongly about it, as I know many, many citizens do. I look for your help. Thank you. With regards, and I know that later tonight, you have a discussion item specifically on gravel roads. But I'm talking about it here because legally, I believe it is an AG1 enhancement. It was brought to the planning commission as an AG1 enhancement. So I am going to mention that now. I believe that three acre minimums on any land adjacent to gravel roads needs to be and remain three acre minimums. That is about conserving and preserving land. It's how it's, needs to be interpreted. And I strongly believe that's an AG1 enhancement. With regards to the undisturbed view shed, I echo the comments that were made by the earlier public speakers. I would concur that the 40-foot needs to remain undisturbed. Again, we've got the examples that were just mentioned, many others, where the distinction between undisturbed and disturbed is huge. If it needs to be disturbed, let that be through a variance process because the majority of the view sheds need to remain undisturbed. With regards to AG1 developments, and we obviously know there's going to be a lot of them. And this has been mentioned elsewhere, and it may be that it's already underway. But it seems that a team of folks needs to be engaged in reviewing a particular development long before an LDP is issued. And that might be a compilation of internal staff, along with our city manager, along with our town architect, you know, along with all the folks that bring a particular attention to detail. And while that might initially sound daunting, it doesn't seem too daunting when it's the future of our community. It would seem that every development, AG1 or otherwise, deserves a multitude of eyes, a multitude of folks that have different experiences and different ability to give detail to the attention that it needs. Because we candidly are not catching all the things that we need to. Specifically because fortunately, we had, I think it was chapter 48 recently approved. I would ask that since that approval has taken place, that anything that's in the hopper, so to speak, get re-reviewed. I think that it's important, and maybe that's already happened. I just, I'm not privy to that. But there were some enhancements to chapter 48 with regards to our roadways that would impact developments that were already kind of in the pipeline. So as an example, Freemenville and Birmingham Road, there's some things there. Do we really need a D cell lane based on the things that were changed? Do we need sidewalks that go nowhere? I don't think we do. I think our rural view shed and the rural character would say no. But some of those developments were submitted with requirements that we no longer require. So I would strongly request and plead with you to go back and make sure we have an exhaustive list of any development under any particular phase of development, even if an LDP has already been issued. If the dirt hasn't been turned, or even if it's been turned, unfortunately against our code, we need to go back. We owe it to ourselves and our community to readdress what's, what's right and what needs to be corrected. Because we have that opportunity, you have that opportunity. And I implore you to please do that. So please go back and re-review every development that's currently in process that may not need what's currently on their plans. Because sometimes it's what we don't need, right, that ruins our rural look. With regards to code enforcement, every day, it becomes clear that we don't have sufficient code enforcement. We've got great people working for the city of Milton, but we don't have enough of the right people. Citizen shouldn't be code enforcement. We should not be the ones having to pick up the phone. We do, but we shouldn't have to be. We should not have to be the eyes and ears of this community all the time. We need more eyes and ears that are paid by the city of Milton to go out and enforce our laws. And they're not being enforced as they need to be. If we don't have code enforcement in place and if we don't take it seriously, we're not going to protect everything that we claim we love. If we love it, we should protect it. And that means we've got to enforce the code. We're nice people, but enforce the code. Smile when we enforce the code. Thank the person that needs the code enforced. But please enforce the code. That's why we have it. That's why we approved it starting in 2006. We're not doing a good enough job. I was just honest. I was honest with my students today when their behavior was not as it needed to be. We got to have direct, honest conversations. We can smile and say thank you, but we need to be honest. With regards to protection of the night sky, I talked about that with you guys before. I know we have an ordinance with regards to night sky. But I think there's some things that we can do within our AG1 development. So when a development's going in, do we really need it to be like an airport? You know, there's a difference between safety and being overlit. So please, let's take some time and think about what more could we do? Because when we erode our night sky, the people that are moving to Milton don't even know what a night sky was. We had one, we still have one in some parts, but we erode it every time we allow too much lighting. There's a balance. We don't need too much. With regards, we've already talked about the recent examples where hopefully we can go back and correct some of those things. One thing that would be really helpful, because the community does want to help, right? We want to help preserve where we live. It'd be really helpful if on the website somewhere, there could be a list of AG1 developments, or any development really, that's actually maybe on the plates of staff. Because we are out driving around, right, when we drive to school or drive to our businesses. So if we were aware that there was a development underway, we could be the, we don't want to be code enforcement, but we could help say, oh, gosh, that's a great example of something being done right. Or gee, did you realize that we might need somebody to run over and take a look? Gee, I didn't see a land disturbance permit, but there's a lot of dirt being turned over and it seems that it might not be legal. So, you know, let the community do what it can help to do. But we would probably need a proactive list that was posted somewhere that just allowed people to know what's underway. And if we know that there's transportation projects coming, I know we do a good job of letting people know that. You know, maybe we could communicate that with regards to other things as well. Because I think if we communicate proactively with our citizenry, it usually serves us all well. AG1 enhancements are so important, and I just can't thank you enough for standing tall along with those trees that came down and helping to improve what you guys have already been working on. Just thank you. This is, from my perspective, one of the most important things you can be doing. The last two points, I would say that I think AG1 enhancements need to prohibit CUPs. I don't think that CUPs in their current state enhance AG1. I think they should be prohibited. And I also think that community septic should be prohibited as it does not enhance AG1 development. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, City, that's all on public comment. Okay. Kathy, I don't know, where would you want to lead this now? Just discussion back and forth with planning commission or?
Yes, I think that I have some questions to the planning commission or want to sort of ask them where they came from in terms of their recommendations and maybe.
And one thing, and just based on comment that I just heard, which reminds me, we've got several today. Carter and Steve, if you guys could do some information going out on what's going on in Drabbapple with the transportation, the DOT project that where the trees are coming down, but at least to, to get that out. Because there are a lot of folks that are wondering if there's something being developed there or what's going on. But sorry, just a little side note. So did, does council have some specific questions? Or commission, I know we, just a question here, maybe it's Kathy. All these yellow highlighted sections in here, is that what the council came up with last night?
Yes, at the last meeting. Yes, but those were, and they essentially related to the exclusion of minor subdivisions and single-family lots. From, from the rural view shed. So I, we try and capture that.
Is it appropriate to talk about that at this time? On the handout that Kathy gave us for the meeting, page three of eight. It addresses the rural view shed and it, it exempts minor subdivisions and single-family homes on essentially rural roads. And after having thought about that for a while, I'd like for us to consider it again. I think what this allows, or eliminates an architectural review of those houses in minor plats and in single-family residences along major roads. And if you stop and think about it, what kind of, all kinds of different architecture would be allowed if we agreed to this section of the code. I think you're, or we're opening ourselves up to really drastic changes in architectural design along a rural view shed. You could go from, say, white columns or iniscary or any other subdivision like that. Then the next parcel that's undeveloped up there, you could get anything from a Frank Lloyd Wright if it were a single-family residence or if it was a minor plat. Or any other type of architecture that's not complementary of the rural character of the community. So I would, I'd like to see us reconsider that and possibly remove that, that condition of rural view shed. And just leave it open as it was before. So all roads or all residences, whether a single-family or minor subdivision plats, are subject to the review of the city architect.
I guess I'm a little confused because I thought that.
I guess I'm a little confused, because I thought that was more about the 40-foot setback than it was about the review by the city architect.
And we haven't talked about.
Yeah.
We didn't strike anything, Sarahville, that had anything to address the architecture.
Yeah, this was, that was actually more about the.
Setback.
Setback. And I would like to further define it such that if the minor, it'd be just minor subdivisions that are like parallel to the road. And I think what we're trying to get at there was the fact that, you know, historically, rural houses didn't have to comply with a 40-foot setback, and they had yards, and we've had several of them built in Milton recently that, you know, one might have crossed from, I guess, Northwestern Middle School, that's a, you know, a nice little house, that it looks much better to have its nice little yard than it would to have what was there previously, so. But I, but we don't want it to be a way for people to get around having to, you know, do it, but so I'd like to see it only be subdivision was no more than three lots parallel, and the three lots are parallel to the, to the road.
Well, that could be parallel, but not adjacent to the right of way.
Kathy, we, if you go back to Bill's point, he makes a good point about trying to make sure that we preserve the look and feel of the rural architecture that's part of what makes Milton, Milton. Don't we address architectural review for AG1 at some point other? This, I guess I don't, that was not in this, we didn't strike anything from this that would have taken that from consideration, because I think it actually does exist somewhere else in our ordinance.
If I may, if you go onto the following page, page four, there are some sections in four, and that's where we talk about structures located on, subject to a rural view shed, our potential elevation shall be reviewed. So that we have in the past with the original rural view shed, we have said that not only are you required to have a rural view shed, but also that it needs architectural review, and that's because you're along an exterior road, so that was always a concern. When we, when we last talked with the council, they did ask us to remove minor subdivisions in individual lots, but the way we structured this is that we said that all the requirements under rural view shed K, section K, which includes one through seven, would be under that exclusion. And so I think the Karen's point is that we really just talk about it in terms of the rural view shed requirement, but leave in subsection four, which is the architectural review.
So is that, does that accomplish it?
Yes.
Joe?
Yeah, so along those lines, and I agree that the smaller three lots or less is sort of a special case, and so we could probably talk about that separately, but I'm interested in understanding the change from the, the change from the undisturbed buffer to the setback, what the logic was there, and why you think that that's a better idea, what issues it really addressing.
I think, I think we would, I mean, I can't speak for everybody, but I think we'd be okay with keeping it as undisturbed. I think what we had the issue with is, when we were talking with staff over the months, is, you know, what's considered undisturbed, right? Because as you can see, we have an undisturbed buffer on the books now.
Right.
And it's getting disturbed, so we were like, all right, how do we fix that?
Yeah, I couldn't agree more.
And so, is it a primary setback? Does that fix it? Or do we keep it at undisturbed and actually have a definition for undisturbed, even though the, it should speak for itself? So, we, I think we're on the same page as far as that, and I think what staff is getting at is they want the, they want the flexibility to where if you want to do the grove, and they want to make it enhance the grove, we should be able to do that. However, everyone's view is different on what is enhancing and what's not. So I think we're fine either way, and we would rather, or at least my opinion, rather be an undisturbed buffer.
Right.
That's what we currently have in the books, so I don't know.
Yeah, and I, in going over this, it seemed, we seemed to be in conflict. I know what we were trying to do was the right thing, and to your point, we have this undisturbed buffer today, yet it gets disturbed all the time. Either it's getting disturbed through a variance, which probably is a small set of the cases, or it's getting disturbed without our approval it's getting disturbed.
Can I jump in there?
And I'm afraid that that happens.
The issue with the undisturbed buffer, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the undisturbed buffer is really only defined currently where you have changes in zoning, specifically where you have a change from like residential to commercial.
That's right.
So the undisturbed, the undisturbed buffer was designed to buffer commercial developments from other types of developments. It's not defined as it pertains to residential development, which is a lot of the issue that we're trying to fix right now. So that's why it's getting disturbed.
So you're saying that when it's residential property that's being developed, the undisturbed buffer goes away?
There is no definition of undisturbed buffer within AG1, within residential development.
Okay. Kathy, maybe correct me, last July, or maybe it was two Julys ago, we did the text amendments, yeah, man, it's two years ago, we did the text amendments that added the 40-foot undisturbed buffer, I mean, because it used to be, there was zero undisturbed buffer, correct?
Correct.
Then we added the language of 40 and 20.
Correct. Yes, and what we're getting caught up in is, there is, but we never defined it, and so, and when we went back to look at definitions.
Right.
Version two, which is what is before us, we realized that the word buffer is already, as Steve mentions, is part of our zoning definition for buffer. And buffer, the term buffer is used to buffer, or, you know, to shade or whatever screens or, or screen residential against commercial developments. That's a zoning buffer, as we know it in the definition here. We're talking about a rural view shed across exterior roads, so how do, what do we call that? How do we refer to it?
Okay, all right, all right.
It's a bit complicated.
I think last meeting that we talked about this, you guys used the language that we're changing the undisturbed buffer to a setback.
That's right.
And so that's why I clung to the idea that the current language addresses it as an undisturbed buffer. But if you're telling me now that the undisturbed buffer actually isn't applicable for residential, then what I would suggest is that we change the setback to an undisturbed buffer, and we put the undisturbed buffer in the language with exactly what it means. It's an undisturbed buffer. And the reason I'm there, the reason I want to go there, is because to me, we've been talking about saving the rural view shed that exists today. We're not talking about creating a rural view shed that doesn't exist and we're imagining it. We want to imagine something new, and therefore we want to engineer something new. I think what we have today, and one of our citizens gave us some great pictures of exactly what exists today, what we have today is, is good. I mean, it's awesome, and it's a lot of reason that people move up here. So protecting that by making it undisturbed, and I don't know if we want to use the term buffer or whatever we want to use, it should, the rule should be, leave what we have alone, and if what we have isn't acceptable, or if it's problematic for any reason, we come, they have to approach us with a variance, and they have to ask us for permission to do something different, as opposed to saying, you guys can do something different from the outset, let's just hope it's something really good, and the city arborist will make that determination. Not that he can't do that, I believe that he can, but my point is, I would rather have this as an exception as opposed to the rule.
But I think to that point, I think what we've got to do, we've got to have some mechanism where it's not, you know, an exact, because I agree, you look at these pictures and everything, that's what people want to preserve, and if, you know, I think in everybody's intent, I know mine would be, if someone's putting a new development in or a subdivision or whatever, you want to keep that buffer, you want to keep the existing, that's what we're picturing so that you don't see a lot. But we also have to have some flexibility or ability. We've had cases where somebody is building a home and a horse barn and horse pastures on five or 10 acres, and there's nothing but some scrub right in the front of it, a beautiful pastured fence, but, you know, you can't see it. Well, that may be a case where the city is okay and the citizens are okay, you want to see that, that's what we're looking for, so.
Yeah.
We have to have some flexibility there, or an avenue that somebody, and to your point, you know, they may have to come for a variance and say, we're going to take some scrubby bushes down and whatnot, but because we've got, you know, five acres of pasture, and, you know, we're going to put blackboard fence in there, but.
Yeah, I think what happened was, we, you know, in the confines of these chambers, we discussed it at length and recognized that we had a shortcoming with what was out there and actually happening today. So we, with the seven, you know, the seven minds and the benefit of staff as well, put together what we thought was something bulletproof, and as soon as you finish it, guess what? It's not.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
So we had, we heard some great suggestions from the community tonight, all of which I think are, have significant merit. To suggest that it goes back to undisturbed is terrific, and I think to suggest that it has, and I think we heard another, another suggestion tonight, that there is a layered on level of buffering if there was going to be something disturbed, but I think even before you go to that point, we may even be better served to say simply undisturbed. And to your point, Joe, if there's going to be a reason, a valid reason for a disturbance, it has to come before measure by planning commission and council for a variance, and then based on what's presented, it's then determined by those deciding bodies that it does or doesn't meet an adjusted standard. If it's not significantly enhanced beyond what's there today, you simply say no, that the undisturbed buffer is what we prefer to see, and you've accomplished both objectives, I think.
I think we've started to take steps in that direction to preserve these natural buffers along some of the roads by eliminating D cell lanes wherever, wherever possible. I think some of the most egregious examples of where these D cell lanes have taken up these natural buffers are over Providence Road, more than one subdivision over there. So I think through that process, eliminating D cell lanes is a big step forward in trying to preserve those undisturbed.
Leave both XL and D cell lanes.
Don't need XL lanes anymore. They're not required in.
D cell and left turn. Left turn lanes and D cell lanes.
Oh, left turn lanes. Karen?
I agree that our default ought to be to keep things as natural as possible, and if what is there is not what we want, then we ought to have strict guidelines for people to change it. I don't know whether or not variance is the right way to go, because under our current code, a variance requires a hardship and several other things, and it doesn't go before the planning commission and council, it goes before the BZA. If we want to call it something else, so that it would come before the planning commission and the council, some other means to make a change, if what is, if what is naturally there is not what is appropriate, if it's, you know, kudzu corner, and we think something else would look much better there, they ought to have a way to do that. But if it's going to come before the planning commission and council, then it's got to be something other than your standard variance, which goes before the BZA.
Well, I think to the point, it, and probably a very small percentage of applications are going to have this issue. So we could either define, you know, either totally undisturbed, or this, this, or this, or have a process where somebody comes, and again, it's not a, you know, not necessarily a hardship, like you'd need to go to the BZA, but it's, it's an improvement both for the individual that owns the property as well as the eyesight of the citizens that live here. And again, I use the example of, you know, and maybe it's as simple as saying, it's undisturbed unless you've got a, you know, you're putting in a pasture and there's nothing specimen or whatever, it's just, you know, scrubby trees and brush, and the structures are X number feet way back, you know, setbacks and blah, 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 but again, it may be better to have on a case-by-case example so that, you know, people can look at it. But, you know, basically, the only way you're going to get around the undisturbed buffer is if it's an improvement, i.e. something better to look at, or a better buffer.
Yeah, I'd go along with that, Joe. And maybe deferred to Ken as far as an undisturbed buffer. We've been talking about definition of undisturbed buffer here for the last several years. Could we identify it as something as vague, but it's to be determined at the time that a land disturbance permit is applied for, and let staff identify what is to remain undisturbed and what is to be improved upon or engineered, as Joe says.
As a rule, my typical position with respect to that is, is when I think back about how zoning codes and land development regulations are typically interpreted by courts, they typically, if there's ambiguity or a gray area, they're typically interpreted in favor of the free use of property. So if you were to ask me, you know, what's my preference, my preference would be to lock it down more as opposed to less. And so to the extent that we want to give staff some discretion, I think that's fine, but at a minimum, I would say we need to set a minimum threshold criteria, and then let staff interpret it over and above that minimum threshold criteria. Does that make sense to what I'm, and I think that may be what you were proposing, but I just wanted to say, I'd, by, by all means, we need to impose a minimum requirement, and that is kind of your, what you were suggesting. At first, do no harm, and then if the standard is that the, that the, what exists on the ground is believed, you know, meets your rural view shed requirements, then, then that's fine, but if in fact some sort of accentuation, some additional plantings or whatever are needed, then that could be the area of discretion. But the baseline is, it has to be X.
And I like that too, with, because again, like I said before, it may be either, you know, you're allowed to be disturbed because there's a better view on the other side of it, or you can improve on the, on the buffer. And, you know, a good example, you know, Karen, you mentioned kudzu, or if there's a, you know, really bad scrub brush area, and it's allowed to be disturbed, but then they have to go back and plant, you know, a better buffer.
Are we better off calling this like a, a undisturbed rural view shed buffer, undisturbed rural view shed setback, so that it doesn't get mixed in with our, our normal undisturbed buffer, to make sure we know that this is something different?
Yes, yes. I mean, hearing Ms. Fields talk about the fact we've already got some, some possibly difficult to interpret buffer language in the code, let's call this something altogether different, so there's no possibility of ambiguity, I agree.
Joe?
So Kathy, in terms of, because we're opening the door now to the idea that something else can be done, in other words, if the view shed that exists today isn't necessarily what the community or somebody thinks that they want, and so we want to put something else there, now all of a sudden we're opening the door for, how do we judge or interpret a proposal? Okay? And so I was wondering, is this something that you think to support the city arborist? Let me state it a different way, maybe. I'm very concerned that we're putting all the weight of making this decision on one person, okay? What I would rather see is for one person potentially to lead a review and make a decision, but do it with support by a lot of other people. And when I was thinking about that, I was thinking about the design review board and what role they could potentially play in this, because this is something that they do on a regular basis for other things. So I wanted to get your take on how we might craft that so that we've got community input, because this is going to be one of those sensitive things where everybody's going to want to have their say, and the minute you do that, it sort of elevates the whole decision up to another level, so I just want to get your take on that.
Well, I think that's not a bad idea, frankly. And our solution, we, because when we look at each rural view shed, you know, you could end up with a rural view shed that has a lot of scrub, and so our thought was to disturb it and enhance it with some more plantings to, you know, and then the opposite is, when you have, as the mayor said, you've got someone who wants to put up a horse pasture and wants to delete those scrub lines because of the horse pasture. So it comes down to a case-by-case, and that's where we sort of ended up. So how do we best address the case-by-case to protect the community's vision, and then working with the developer to make sure that that happens? So our solution was to use the city arborist, he's a staff member and he's familiar with plants, but I think the important takeaway is that it, many times, it may be a case-by-case. If the natural understood do no harm, it is not. If the natural understood do no harm, it is not relevant. So whether it's the city arborists or the design review board, for those cases that are different than the do no harm scenario, um, you know, I think certainly we, we could, you know, find that acceptable. We adjust use the staff person, but it did the board report as well, as long as we have that ability. Because I really think that you wouldn't want that flexibility as, as you go along.
Yeah, let me, let me make a comment too on that, to that point. And I think we need to be careful. Maybe it's a stage thing because all these things we are talking about should be benefits to, to the property owners, the community, everybody. These should all be good things. The reason you would allow an undisturbed buffer to be disturbed is to improve the landscape or to improve the year or whatever. And I think we need to be careful and maybe we have a step. Maybe there's some things that are real obvious and real easy to make the decision that staff could, and then it may elevate to the next one where it needs a bigger committee. And the worst case elevate to it where it comes before the public in a hearing and whatnot. Because if we're not careful, we may lose out on some opportunities because some people may just say, well, you know what? Forget it. I'm not going through a whole hearing. I'm not applying for all this. I'm not spending months and months. We'll just let it be, you know, less desirable. So, you know, I think we need to, you know, there are probably some things that are very elementary that are obvious that, you know, a small committee or staff could say, yes, obviously you can, you can approve on this. But then if it gets to a certain level or, you know, but that's, that's my, I just want us to be careful that we don't make such a big deal out of it. The people just say, well, never mind. We're not going to go through that.
Joe?
Um, I tend to approach things scientifically, I guess. And I know we have approved here recently for Carter contract to do pavement, uh, evaluation with a traveling vehicle with cameras on it photographing pavement, determining the serviceability of the roads and whatnot. Uh, we have about, what, between 190 and 200 miles of road in the city?
172.
172. Oh, we've lost them.
You wrote it, Joe.
I, I got it. I got it.
How difficult would it be to determine, well, we could determine it, I guess, the, the amount of land that's already been developed that's, uh, out there and the amount of land that's to be developed? And as Joe says, what our, our perception or our, our idea of rural view shed is what we have today or what's left today. Why not go photograph what's out there? Instead of leaving it to conjecture and personal, uh, evaluation, is, is this what we had originally? Is this view shed that, uh, we want to preserve out here? Photograph it. And whenever development comes in for permit, well, here's what it is or what it was on the eighth of August, 2016. And this is what we wanted to preserve. So, just a thought.
I'd add, you guys have already done that for us, so.
We've, we've got recent aerial photography. The county maintains that this is virtual, match aerial photography. But we've got all 16 aerial photography. And as Councilor Luss mentioned, uh, photographic work they do for pavement analysis, they have to do a pavement, uh, or they have to do a roadway photograph as they go down too. So, uh, what we did in 2012 and what we do now, we have photographs every 10 feet along all the roads to get back. So, um, that gives you basically a view down the roadway, the aerial photography that gives you a view, like you, uh, what extends town beyond.
Let's use the tools that we already have.
So it is documented.
I just think, Bill makes a good point. When we talk, just looking at paper, we're trying to make decisions with words and whatever. Yet when you look at something, you've got a certain feeling. You say, okay, that's what it looks like. Yeah, that's what I like. If we can capture that, then I think you're also going to help, uh, community development. If we've got the record already, we, so when someone comes in and we know the parcels and we can look and say, okay, what is there today? So I think you need to start with what we've got today before you can decide, does it need to be, you know, improved upon or whatever.
But I think that's fairly obvious because whatever someone brings forward, obviously there's going to be the existing. And we'll have a documented, you know, but again, whatever someone's bringing forward, it's existing there and you can, can measure it from that. I mean, I think the good news is what we're talking about, and I believe everybody's on the same page, is we're only talking about it, we're only talking about either saving and preserving what's there or improving on it. So, you know, it's, it should be a good thing, but, uh...
Could I jump in, Mayor?
Yeah.
The, uh, I think the, where some of the problem is also with, with, with some of the interpretations from the community is what is improvement? Um, a, a recent example would be what's called was, is the development of the Freemanville and Nix. A, a lot of what was removed there was invasive species and scrub. Um, I think a lot of people would, don't want that touched. Now, if it's go, currently as staff would interpret it, they would look at that and say, okay, we've got a bunch of kudzu there. Do you want to see kudzu or do you want to see what, you know, what's on page three of what was handed out? If that's the case, the, you're going to see exactly what happened, um, all along Freemanville Road right now because that's going to be removed and I, hopefully something as nice as what's on page three would, uh, would, would replace that. But I, I think we need to come to a determination. Do we want to just leave, do you want staff to make those determinations? Or do you want to just leave that, that buffer as is, whatever it is? Um, uh, because we're, as staff is, as we look at it right now, I, I don't mean to put words in anybody's mouth here, but I have a feeling you're going to see page three and not what was, what was originally there on, uh, on, on Freemanville.
And I just want to be careful because sometimes when you make absolutes and you have absolute rules, you know, it doesn't work in every situation.
Sure.
So, uh, you know, my position is I would rather see it improved. Um, so I don't know how everybody else feels, but I think we need to clarify that and, and have at least the vehicle to do that if, you know, if everybody's on board with that.
I think people might feel better about what was happening in Nix and Freemanville if they knew what was coming to, to backfill, what happened.
Yeah.
All they're seeing right now is red clay.
And you know, that's a good point. And unfortunately, you know, I made it a point today when I'm driving around. And I'm driving and I see some established neighborhoods and a lot of times you, you hear people say, well, look at new development versus 20-year-old, you know, they didn't do it like, they didn't clear cut like they're clear cutting now. But if you really look at it close, you can picture, okay, that was cut. These trees were planted 10 years ago, 15 years ago, these bushes, whatnot. And so sometimes it does take a little time to heal. A good example's New Providence Road where, where the development came in and they had to clear extra wide area to put the trail in, take trees down and all that. It looked terrible when you drove by. But if you drive by it now and you see the grass and the trail meandering through there, people would say, wow, that looks really good. But it's, it is a snapshot in time when they come in and see, you know, see the, the brown dirt versus something green. Now, granted, you know, trees down is, is a big issue, but, you know, just dirt versus, you know.
And some of the, some of the entrance things that we've, um, known to be of the Milton today is also going to be changed with some of the things that are being proposed by the planning commission for you guys to consider. And that is that the grand entrances are proposed to be a thing of the past. It's going to be more, um, six hills like in our proposed, uh, language for you guys to consider than it is even the White Columns entrance that I live in. Um, so I think we're moving in that direction and the objective is to not have the scraping and the clearing of any of that stuff. So we're, if you choose to adopt what we're proposing, we, we have taken some of those steps.
What, uh, we hope most Kathy too is staff with direction and, you know, you guys are what?
Um, well, I guess what I'm hearing is, uh, the, um, the idea that a, that a case by case may not be so bad because there are extenuating circumstances, but do you want to elevate it to a DRB which meets once a month, which could, um, add some, some extra time and, and effort to a potential developer? Um, what I'd say is that when we do our formal codes, we do have when we go administrative variance. And that's something that I give, um, with, um, uh, discussion with other members of my staff to determine whether or not, um, something could achieve a variance as per what the code allows. So, um, rather than having the city arborists be the lone arbiter to determine whether or not a rural view shed should be enhanced or not, um, it's something that the community development director could do through an administrative variance. It would be a variance if you know it through the BZI. It's, uh, it would have a couple of other names. But, um, it, it would be a way then to have other people touch it as well.
You know, if we could come up with different levels, you know, I know it's maybe hard to, to put on paper, but, I mean, there are some things that I'd be willing to bet 99% of people would agree 100, you know, all the time on 99 because there's always one person that would disagree. But, you know, things are very obvious. And, and maybe to your point, and when you mentioned a developer and a development, to me, if it's a subdivision going in or whatever and they're having to submit plans and whatnot, and that's the case, they're going through a big process. That may be fine to go through the variance process or go to the DRB or whatever is part of it. You know, to me, the concern is if you got a, you know, somebody that bought a five acre parcel or a three acre parcel and they're just doing something that we, you know, rural, that looks rural we want to have, you know, is that something where it could be as simple as going into a meeting with the arborist and saying, okay, you know, this kudzu and these scrubs can go if you plant this or if you, you know, put pasture in in a blackboard fence, something like that. That's my concern is, you know, the small property owner or somebody that's doing something that is equestrian or agricultural, you know, that would, would make them not want to do it if it was too much red tape, so to speak. But now when you get to a, you know, if it's a development going in and they're submitting plans and doing lots and whatnot, I personally don't feel, you know, I don't mind them having to go through a harder step to, if, in a case by case.
Will you see that curl up on it? Would that be like 10 acres?
Well, or maybe we go back to a, you know, a, what do you call it? A monoplat or a three acre, a three...
Monoplat doesn't have to have it anyway though, does it?
Well, like these changes that we have, right now, um, we added a step for any three lots or more has to have a CZIM type meeting, correct?
Yes.
So, so, I mean, that's part of the new change. So I guess just thinking out loud, the, that CZI or that public info meeting could be with the DRB to talk.
Right. Yeah, maybe it's addressed that way.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you kind of have it in there that maybe y'all could just add some lanes.
And for the record, Tootie, Councilmember Hewitt's here, but for the record, he did not get the memo from Councilmember Lasker-Morrow. You read your minute again there.
I'm on my own person.
Well, so, so right now the way you've structured it is that, um, that my monoplat and individual lots are exempt from the rural view shed requirement. So they wouldn't have any design process. So, so they would be out to start with. So if that's sufficient, fine. We'll re, re-raise it up to 10 acres.
I don't know, but yeah, but if it's, you know, and maybe we firm this up, but if it's a quote no brainer, if somebody submits something and, you know, it's a no brainer that's an improvement on the, the view shed, you know, I don't know what the best way to have staff or, you know, to different levels, again, to whether it needs to come, come before us or as Peyton said, to, you know, CZIM process or just part of the process. Karen?
To me, if you can get the community development director, the town architect, and the arborist to all agree that it's an administrative minor improve, the improvement, then they probably ought to just get the improvement. But if, if not, all three of them don't agree on the improvement and, and to me that's, they have to actually see what the improvement's going to be. So it's not just, well, you know, we're going to prove, then it needs to go to the DRB.
I, I mean, I would agree with that because I think if you have to go three levels of step, and you guys know what us in the community are looking for, um, you know, to point your, we just need to make sure we're on top of that.
I mean, if all three of them agree that, you know, the kudzu field needs to be improved on, then, you know, then I, I think that's pretty much a no brainer. But, you know, if they all three don't agree, then it just needs to go to the DRB with the recommendation.
If it's not clear cut, pardon my term. The decision's not clear. Okay.
Or even if it's, if it's, you're not clear as to what the replacement is, it still needs to go to the DRB. It's only administrative if y'all all agree that it needs to be improved and what that improvement is.
Right. If we have a clear plan and we all agree.
And that it's definitely an improvement. You know, I guess the litmus test was it'd be an improvement that the community would support, council would support, and, you know, hopefully the landowners support too.
On page four, under number three, it says criteria that may, may to be used. And I don't know if it's criteria that may be used or criteria to be used. To me, those are different because may is can or cannot, where to be is, is.
Yeah, that's a, that's a very ambiguous, isn't it?
Yeah. So I was, wasn't sure what the intent was, if it was may be used.
I think there's, I think there's actually a word in there. Yeah, there's just one.
Which one?
I don't know. That's what I'm asking is which one is it?
Which ever one you were referring to.
I would say to be.
I think you're right.
I get rid of the may.
To be is the same.
I think we intended to say Mike could be fixed now.
Going back on the previous, uh, point, uh, maybe ask Ken, Karen suggested to, uh, have the buffer reviewed by three or four members of staff.
Yep.
Do you think that's specific enough or is it still vague?
It's going to be, it's going to be a matter of how it's written. I'll have to work with Ms. Field on looking at the actual language that they bring back to you. We got to, you know, one of the curious things anymore is we got to be careful about creating an ad hoc committee that's basically voting on this as well. So we'll have to look at that issue, uh, as well to make sure we don't have to have them assemble by way of an agenda notice every time they meet to pass upon this thing. So we'll just have to be clear that they're acting independently. The expectation is I heard it would be that they would all have to basically sign off on some form of either it looks good, keep it as it is, or some sort of enhancement. We'll have to build in an appellate right, obviously, because there's going to be some check on what they have the ability to require from these individuals. So, Councilor Luss, to your point, all, all good questions, I'll, I'll work with Kathy. I'll try to get some language that can bring back to you that I'm comfortable with.
And I have a question on, kind of on that point, Ken, on section 64 dash 418. Um, we've got a whole notification process for everybody that's in the area with regards to every parcel. And while I applaud the idea that we are announcing exactly what's going on, there's really no teeth into that process because we, people will be notified of what's coming, but there's nothing that can be changed by that process or, or however, because it's still by right with AG1. Is that correct or am I wrong with that?
No, I think that's, I think that's right. I seem to recall, it's been a while ago that we discussed that, the notion of providing notice sometimes carries with it the expectation that if I get notice, therefore I get to effectuate the result. And that can be frustrating to people that basically find out that, no, you were, you were, you were notified just to know that this is coming and there's not really another shoe to drop. Um, however, you know, as with many things, sometimes when you're debating whether to provide notice or, or not provide notice, I think the council sort of contended itself that it was better just to let folks know. And even if there's no, you know, ability to affect change, because it is still as a right, Councilor Luss.
Sure. Gets how you worded that notice.
Right.
Please be advised.
Courtesy.
Courtesy notice.
Yeah, just like the, the trees over there at Strawberry Field. I mean, if some of that work could get out what it really was, then I think, uh, even if somebody didn't like it, then they would understand it. Okay, Rick?
And part of the discussion I like too is what Joe had said, if, if it, you don't come to agreement, um, the DRB today looks at kind of look and feel and architecture, they could be maybe a part of that process from review process. And then part of your review, if it was three members or whatever, you would be looking at those photos or whatever so you'd actually see what, what are we starting with when you're considering?
Anything else?
This one is...
Kathy?
Would you like us to work on bringing this back to, um, the best office?
Yeah, I would, I would say time is of the essence. Does everybody else agree with that?
Yeah.
As soon as you can. Okay, Tootie, you can follow next time.
Thanks. I have a discussion of Marzey 1519 to amend the R1 Single Family Residential District, Chapter 64, Article 6, Division 3.
Um, all these are the same changes, Mr. Mayor. They reflect all the residential districts. Um, so we had a discussion, I need you... So, we had a discussion, I think you wondered really if place R1, R2, R3, and CUP.
Okay. Do we have any specific public comment? Okay, I'll open up the discussion. Okay. We'll move on, follow next item, Sudi.
Next item is discussion of RZ fifteen-twenty to amend the R2 Single Family Residential District, chapter sixty-four, article six, division four.
This is the, this is the change to the rural view shed, where we're taking out the discussion on the, on the undisturbed buffers, which was version one way back, and we're putting now the revised version into individual zoning districts. So, it's a cleanup that will need to happen. And in addition, while we have opened it up, we changed the storm order language so as to prohibit structural storm order facilities. And, and then, there was one more change, on page two, is related to retaining walls, where we add a language to say that the retaining walls are about three foot long, and have a continuous plan of everything, or as approved by the city arborist. And that was language that came on our last meeting. So, those are the highlights of the changes to the rural view shed that we're going to go on.
Any questions on that? Sudi will answer next.
Next one is discussion of RZ fifteen-twenty-one to amend the R2A Single Family Residential District, chapter sixty-four, article six, division five.
Anything, Kathy?
No.
Okay. Any other, any public comments?
Is it this one, AG1?
Yeah, okay, so you've got a public comment part of it.
Julie Zoner Bailey, two fifty-five Hickory Flat Road. Because so many of these relate to the same, I, this is, I guess, a point for you to consider after hearing your discussion about what size lots the rural view shed would apply to. And I think Councilmember Lusk started to go down this path, and I, I thought it was a really good conversation. I'm just not sure that I heard the senation. I think what I heard was a question about, should the rural view shed apply to all pieces of land? Because every parcel, even if it's not a minor plat, if it's not a subdivision, you could have somebody acquiring a ten-acre parcel, and if they didn't have a process to go through, we, as a community, might still end up with an eroded view shed. So, I thought it was a really valid point. I think the discussion ended up going in the direction of, do those get an architectural review? But I'd love to hear you guys maybe bring conclusion, guys and gals, conclusion to that discussion of, should the rural view shed apply to all, all parcels that are parallel, or maybe not just parallel, right, but all parcels? And I know you had some thoughts as to why you moved that and applied it to just three lot subdivisions, but it seems to me we run the risk, if we don't apply it to all, that we still erode our rural view shed. So, I just thought that was a good discussion. I don't know that I heard conclusion, and we just encourage you to maybe talk about that before we assume that the rural view shed isn't applicable maybe for all parcels. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I, I would bring up, we, we would have the architectural review, which, let me see, Bob here, but Kathy, but that would, that would, he would look at, the city architect would look at view shed issues and whatnot, correct?
In terms of the structures on exterior streets, I believe is what you're saying. We will make sure, even though the way the language is written is that the rural view shed requirements, setback requirements would be exempt through real lots, we'll ask, but we will write it in a way that says there's still architectural review for any structures that front or are touched.
But I guess the intent, that was to make sure that, basically, the same standards apply, you know, if, if they had a situation, and I can't think of too many, but that were grossly, you know, different than what the view shed that the city is looking for. I wonder if we could address that then, does that make sense at all?
In terms of the architectural review, or in terms of?
Just, you know, with the arborist or whatever, you know, I'm trying to think if they had a forest in front of the structure, and they wanted to clear cut it.
But if somebody had, if somebody had a whole bunch of scrubbing blackberry bushes, and they're, and they're building a house on one acre that fronts the street, you kind of let them clear that out so they have a nice yard, rather than just a bunch of the blackberries.
You like blackberries?
Oh, yeah. But, but I think that's why we, you know, so, yeah, I think if you can just write it as, as part of the architectural review, it looks not, looks at not only the structure itself, but the placement on the lot of.
Yeah, I think that's the point I was trying to make, that they'll catch, you know, if there's, they can catch that in there that, you know, if it's, if it's legitimately.
Right.
Should be improved, it will be improved, or they're allowed to improve.
If it shouldn't be touched, then it's not touched.
Can I ask you a question? Currently, as part of our review, Kathy, we're, they're not, we're not looking at, correct me if I'm wrong, we're not looking at the vegetation along the roadway.
Not small.
Well, right now, the, the, the current rural view shed requirements we have in place include all lots, single-family up. And that includes looking at the rural view shed and also doing architectural review. That goes in place right now.
So, as a result of the enhancements that, that are being recommended, it's, it's being recommended that minor plots, plots will no longer be. So, now, as a result, if we, if we move forward with this wording, will those single, will those one, two, and three plot developments, will they be subject to, under that architectural review, will they be looking at the rural view shed?
The rural view shed is being excluded from consideration.
I just want to make sure we're having a meeting of the minds here.
The architectural review, we will make sure it still remains attached.
And what will be part of that architectural review? Will, will any of the rural view shed be, will that, will that fall under the architectural review on the, on the one, two, and three lot development?
Not as, as we define it.
So, we're not, so, we're not connecting here.
No.
We won't call it the rural view shed in that case. What you're talking about is the frontage on the road.
Yes.
A, a normal landscape.
How about this, though, even if it's not technically under the rural view shed, that'd be one of your criteria that you're looking at. What is the view shed? Are they improving the view shed, or are they trying to make it worse? If it's worse, you guys have some.
Sort of a soil.
Some ability to, yeah, you, those, those properties may be exempt, but part of your process includes looking at, just like we would on anything else.
And a rural landscape.
Right, yeah.
So, we'll have to change that under, under the minor plots.
Is everybody? Review would be required, requirements, not recommendations on what to do, if you see that it needed to be not, not touched or enhanced, whatever the staff says would go. It'd have, the, the person would have to do.
It will be under the architectural review process that we won't have to make.
Would that fall under the same subcommittee of staff?
I don't think so. I, I don't think so. And again, I would want to see some teeth put to that. I mean, that needs to actually make its way into the code. You know, we talk a lot in Milton about what is the intent of the code? What is the intent of this? And so, we need to, we need to, to blend that into this architectural review, so it's not just amorphous. It actually, we have to resort to the intent of the rural view shed. So, something like, even though not applicable, the architectural review shall embrace and implement standards that are part of the rural view shed, and they will be, you know, brought to bear administratively by permitting. They'll have to be brought to bear. So, we'll have to draft some language that makes that happen.
So, on the number four, we would change it, instead of saying just for structures located on lots subject to rural view shed, architectural elevation shall be reviewed and approved by the city architect. It would say, uh, architectural elevations and a landscape plan would have to be reviewed.
Mr. Mayor, why aren't we, why aren't we parsing words on this? Why don't we just say everything needs to be reviewed? I mean, why is, why is a minor plot?
Well, I think, I think that's what we're, we're talking about now.
Yeah, and I, I mean, we're.
About default, we're coming back around to that.
We're still sort of looking for ways to make an exception, where I, I think we've, we've been given good reason to rethink the language that we brought forward to you, to go back to ground zero and say, everything, everything needs to be reviewed, no disturbing of the buffer, period, until such time that it's been reviewed, whether it's one acre, one lot, minor plat, or anything above that.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Kathy, is the, is the limitation, though, the, the, the three lots, or the, the limitations, the minor plat limitations, is that, is there an administrative technicality and resource-based reason that, that it's, we're not just simply saying disturb everybody? I mean, is there, is there some workflow issue that's limiting that, or is?
No, no, no. I, I think it was, it was just a concern when you're dealing with individual lots or three or less, is, is that too much to ask for rural view shed or not? I think that's, I put it to a worse.
The concern I had was, you know, and we've had these discussions before, you'll have somebody that comes in, and I'll make up an example, but might have ten acres, and says, "You know what, we're going to do a family compound of three homes, and we just want to leave it natural and do this and that, and, and minimum cost." Then we have rules that say, "Well, you've got to have a fire line, and you've got to put curb and gutter, you've got to do that." All of a sudden, they go, "And you got to have buffers, and you got to plantings on." They go, "Well, gosh, we can't afford to do that. We're going to have to put eight houses in there to afford the cost of doing that." So, that was the original ten I had, was if it's a small, you know, up to three lots, it's not going to be a development, it's usually an individual. And, you know, to kind of help make sure that we didn't run, run those folks off, so to speak. But that was the original ten.
And that, that's what I thought we talked about.
And, and I think to Kathy's point, and, and Paul, you know, respectfully, if, when you guys are looking at the small, three-lot or less developments or property owners, and you're using the same criteria, you know, that we are on the larger ones, I think we could achieve the same thing, but it just may be a simpler process, if that makes any sense. But I think, to Kathy's point, you just kind of want to have some process in writing on it.
I would just argue that if you take any one of these pictures that were presented to us by the PND this evening, and you lined up three lots, and said that they were not subject to the same standards, who are asking the larger ones to be subject to, you could wipe out a pretty significant view shed with three lots lined up in any one of these pictures. So, I, I would strongly encourage that when we look at that language, that we contemplate every single one with no exception.
Could you somehow make it that, you know, if, if they're three lots, and they all access the, the main road directly versus, you know, what your son, I think, kind of saying is, is you have a, a larger ten-acre parcel, and there's one driveway that goes in, not a, not a real road, but one driveway, and you have three houses tucked back in there. But if it's three houses at front, you know, that, that front on Road X, then that's another.
I think you just need to leave it.
I mean, that, that's the, talking about intent and everything, I mean, that makes it easy and clean and clear.
Let's be frank, what's the message that the community's been sending us for a couple of years at this point? Stop changing the complexion of our view shed. So, let's quit looking for ways to make exceptions to our view shed.
Okay, but you just took my point earlier, sometimes you make an absolute rule.
Yeah.
And it turns out, you know, you may, you may not make exceptions.
It's on the books right now.
But then, all of a sudden, it's a new subdivision with twenty homes or whatever, versus, you know, a rural.
But there's a process, and we're suggesting that there's still a process, but it starts, I think it should start.
I would suggest that the process maybe is a little simpler on a small, you know, same criteria, but not as involved, but that's, you know, again, I, I don't necessarily have a, you know, if the council and everybody wants to do it where it's absolute, and then, you know, small parts have to come in and get an exception, that makes sense, and everybody's, you know, that's a, that works too. Rick?
I think the concern that we had is we didn't want to, if I've got a, a single homeowner with one acre that he's going to develop, and it's along the roadway, to say, "Okay, you have to leave your sixty feet in the front undisturbed," whereas what might be appropriate is, you may leave your big trees, but you may have a lawn there instead of an undisturbed buffer. So, as far as a review, I'm okay with looking at a review, just like we want to capture everything today so we see what it is, but then depending on what is going on that property. If it's a twenty, twenty-home subdivision, it's going to be a greater impact, and no, you're going to be subject to this. But if it's a single home or two homes, I think, put yourself in the, the place of the landowner. Would you want someone, if you've got scrub and stuff along the front, so you can't touch this for sixty feet? Or should it require a view to say, "Is this in character with what we're trying to develop?" I thought that's what we talked about, is when you talk about, instead of the bigger subdivisions, but you talk about individual homes. We don't frankly see a lot of individual homes being built along the roadway though, but we have seen some recently where they look really nice with the trees and grass, and it looks better than an undisturbed buffer.
Going back to the rule.
Well, maybe we should see what this process is, instead of just, you know, kind of guessing about it, talking about it. Let's see it in writing when it, when it comes back around, and then we can make a decision.
Give us bigger animal pictures.
Yeah, we can find, find that out, look at your, what you guys come up with. Does that make sense? You guys good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, Sudi, where we are.
Number six, discussion of RZ fifteen-twenty-three to amend the CUP, Community Unit Plan District, chapter sixty-four, article six, division twenty-three.
Do you have any comment? Kathy?
I'm saying.
Okay. Discussion, questions, comments?
Next item is discussion of RZ fifteen-twenty-four to amend the rural Milton overlay for single-family type uses, section sixty-four, one-one-four-one.
And, Mr. Mayor, I apologize, my explanation about amending the rural overlay, putting up that lot was really now, instead of, really applied to twenty-one.
Okay. That's, no comments. All right, any questions on those sort of discussions? Okay. Did you guys feel you got some direction?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Can we discuss, discuss this enforcement?
Absolutely. What works, I've got all these.
I mean, we just don't seem to be able to enforce what we're doing. I mean, the public has spoken. We have said to ourselves in the meetings that we need more support in enforcement. You know, I mean, I'm not, I mean, I see this guy day in, day out, but there's, you know, one, I think we have two, right? One.
One color enforcement.
It's impossible.
You know what, a good point for it, what, what I might suggest, and, and not trying to throw anybody on the bus here, but maybe direct, if we could direct staff to, you know, go back and look and report back to us what you see, you know, if you think you need some more help, if you can, what we can do. I think there's a combination of, you know, part of it is communication, too. Because, again, some of the things we brought up earlier is, you know, there may be some areas where people see, quote, "Clearcutting," but it's just kudzu and brush, and it's terrible, and once they come back. But if we could communicate that, you know, "Hey, here's, here's what's going to happen. Right now, they're taking this out, but they got to plant this back," or whatever, "When it's done, it's going to look a whole lot better." I mean, maybe we could work on a combination of, of if we need to have more support with our staff out there to enforce it, but then also communicating what's going on with.
Building, very good.
Communication, even if, and maybe with new communications. We have a blurb that goes out every time something new's going, "Hey, development on Freemanville and Nix, here's what's going on." You know, they're clearing off, and then taking this out, but they've got a great landscape plan, and it'll be back. You know, "Sorry for the inconvenience right now, you'll see some, it won't look really good, but hey, you know, six months from now, it'll look beautiful," that kind of thing.
Well, you know, they, and, and I don't take saying this lightly, because I don't think the City of Atlanta does many things well, but, you know, they always have signs up that say, you know, issuing sort of building permit, you know, or tree removal permit, or this, that, or the other. At least that puts, you know, folks on notice that they can go on and click on this website or something like that, and, and see what's going on.
What if, along with the permit sign, they had to include a copy of landscape plan that was permanently there, that people could go up and at least see what it looked like?
A lot of times, those plans are on site, should be with LDP plans.
But they're not actually in with the, the, the permit box, so that people passing by don't really know what's there.
Your LDPs usually might not be relevant to you there, but yes, your individual, and your smaller projects, it may not.
and your smaller projects, it may not be.
Cause it would be, and it would be nice to be able, just to, if you see something and wonder what's going on there, you could pull off and, you know, look it up very quickly.
I don't know if that's, I agree to hear you, but I don't know if that's necessarily the, the safest way to achieve that.
Yeah, maybe.
Or have a number on it, that says, you know, there's such and such a number, go to the website and look at, some, some way that people can get the information, cause I think that's part of our problem, is communication.
Well, that goes back to communicate, yeah, we can...
I mean, I have to admit, the first thing I asked Carter when I came in today is, what happened to all those trees in front of strawberry fields, and I didn't realize it was the city, so, yeah, but yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, the, the, the community members I know were upset, but I was too, so, yeah, I felt better once I knew what it was, so I think if we can get communication out, that helps.
When we talk about enforcement, and I guess put, use Bill's term to put some teeth into it, that seems to be part of the problem, and I think, aren't we concurrently, while we're considering this, also looking at improving and enhancing, uh, strengthening our tree ordinance, because that's part of where we've seen a lot of issues, is it's a lot easier to say, well, I'll pay into a recompense fund, but I just took down that big oak tree, but I'll pay you X number of dollars, and it'll never go back on that site, but now I've got my clear cut space, and I guess, and, and that even goes into not just the buffer, but interior to the development of subdivision, what are we, what's our tree ordinance say, and how are we gonna actually do it, cause it's not just along the roadway, that's, you know, the, a key, but where you have seen, you know, like, I, I don't even wanna use the Cambridge reference, but there were some beautiful old oak trees there, and they just got, and they, they were fenced off first, and then all of a sudden, boom, they were gone, to the point that there's nothing out there now, so the, the question is, how do we enforce that, because obviously today, the way it's written, it doesn't carry a lot of weight, cause people still say, oh, it's a lot cheaper for me to do this, so I'm just gonna take them down, I'll pay the penalty afterwards, are we still, are we looking at changing the tree ordinance?
Absolutely, we're in the process right now.
Yes, we're advertising for a consultant to help us with that, and, um, within the month, we should have someone on board, and we're gonna start rewriting that for our ordinance.
Okay, and I guess that, along with, like, like Fred was suggesting, if we can, from enforcement standpoint, just on all these things, if we just, it sounds like we're gonna put some more things in there as far as the review process, know what it looks like ahead of time, question is, okay, here's what it looked like ahead of time, what happens if I, oops, and I cut all the stuff down, do we stop the, do we stop that developer on that project?
Pull the permit, it only happened once.
And do you need a stop, stop order, I mean, I think those things are what we've gotta look at, because otherwise if it's just, ooh, sorry, that's what we've seen a lot over the last few years, is people will do it without, no ask for forgiveness, and keep moving on.
But you know, to that point, and maybe when I ask if, if staff can kinda look at enforcement, and if you need support, and, and what our needs are, maybe you could give us some statistics on how often, if that helped, it happens a whole lot, because I know, a lot of times it gets, you know, it may, anytime you write by and say, hey, you know, they took these trees down and weren't supposed to, but, you know, maybe it was in their plan, and they are recompensated by planting more trees or whatever, it'd be nice to kinda know how many citations, or how often you go to where somebody actually took down trees that shouldn't have been downed, so.
I'll pull what we have.
Okay. Thank you guys, Fred. You guys have any other closing comments, whatever? Not you, but seriously, we appreciate, number one, all the hard work and time, and also just coming to me for this again and all that, so. All right, thank you. You guys have to stay. All right, the rules, go ahead, and, we're gonna go ahead and move into our regularly scheduled work session, we've got two items on our agenda, public comment is allowed to germane to those items, if you wish to speak, you're required to fill out a public comment card, turn it in to the city clerk. Public comment is allowed for a total of ten minutes per agenda item, and two minutes per person, public comment will be heard at the beginning of the item. Do we have any public, we're getting to public comments soon, and I'll give just a second for public comment on these two items, does anybody in the audience have not, that wants to speak, have not turned in a card? Sure? Give a couple minutes there on that, or we know that this gentleman's gonna be giving a card. Citi, I'll ask you to call the first agenda item.
For Tadman's, discussion of inconsistent AG one-zoned lot development standards along gravel roads contained in the subdivision ordinance, Section fifty seventy-one nine, and the zoning ordinance, Section sixty-four forty-one four-one six E two, and to seek direction from the mayor and the city council.
Sure.
Thank you, sir, um, let's see, I passed out, you should all have, um, uh, the subdivision regs, which is the Section fifty dash seventy-one, um, and then also on the second sheet, the zoning, uh, regulation, Section sixty-four dash four sixteen, development standards, and what I wanted to bring to you tonight was a, an inconsistency in our codes between the subdivision and the zoning, and, um, and to seek your guidance, because as the community development director, I have the duty to interpret inconsistencies, and, um, so, um, I would like to get your viewpoint in terms of how I should interpret, and here is the issue, the issue is that in the subdivision regs, it speaks to, um, uh, AG one, AG zoned land that is adjacent to or has access to unpaved roads, and that each proposed lot shall contain a minimum area of three acres, that's what the subdivision regs said, and the zoning, uh, development standards, it says, it's, it says that a minimum lot acre shall be as follows, one acre with frontage on paved road, three acres with frontage on unpaved road, so, so, so the zoning makes a distinction between pavement and non-paved. The subdivision regs only speak to the fact that when, when you're, have frontage on a gravel, that it should be three, um, uh, acres. Now, my quandary is that many times I have lots that have frontage both on a paved road and on an unpaved road, and so, um, uh, so the quandary is how to interpret that, I have historically interpreted that if there is frontage on a paved road per the zoning, um, I can, I'm allowed to, to allow for one acre, uh, for, um, for each, uh, residential lot, um, regardless of whether it also fronts on a, on paved road. Um, I've discussed this with a city attorney, he feels that that is an appropriate interpretation, however, um, if the council thinks that I should interpret this differently, um, there is room for, um, a written opinion to be developed on this, that I could use as the basis for my interpretations in the future, and Ken, I don't know if you wanna say anymore to that, but...
Kathy, thank you, let me, um, let me explain how we, how I got there, and first of all, let me say at the outset that I do agree, first of all, with Kathy's interpretation, um, looking at the two provisions, you've got one in, in Chapter fifty, and then one, of course, in the zoning code, first of all, as with anything, forgive me for the prism that I look at, 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 at issues from, but it's always gonna be kinda what a court would do, right? What would a court do if they were looking at these two provisions, how would a court construe them, so we need to go through a couple of standards of statutory construction, so I will avoid it at ears, I'm very fun at cocktail parties, but this sort of talk, but the bottom, first of all, a couple of things to think about, first of all, in reviewing an ordinance, and of course, we have a Milton City Code, so it's an entire code, it's an entire body, it's not all these independent, used to be the case, but when there was a state statute that said we had to codify all of our ordinances, all jurisdictions in Georgia now have to do that, you have to codify all of your ordinances to make them all part of a unified whole, that's one thing to keep in mind, and therefore, when a court looks at fifty and sixty-four and all of these various provisions, first of all, they're gonna construe them together, and they're gonna do what's, quote, harmonize them if possible, in other words, that means that a court looking at provisions like this is gonna want to make them make sense as drafted, what courts do not like to do is take a piece of code and throw it out and say, you know, that doesn't make any sense, that, that's purely superfluous, they don't like to do that, they wanna construe them to make sense, so first of all, you have Chapter fifty, which speaks to a specific issue, which is lots in AG one on unpaved roads, it does not mention, as best I can tell, anything having to do with lots in AG one on paved roads, it is silent, so Chapter fifty is silent on that, however, Chapter sixty-four is not, which is, by the way, your zoning code, and it speaks to both issues, so there's one statutory construct that says, all things being equal, if there is a specific statutory section that addresses the specific issue, the specific controls over the general, that's number one, number two is the length, is the, the language in your zoning ordinance altogether, which says, the zoning ordinance shall abrogate, which means to annul, cancel, revoke, or destroy, the zoning ordinance shall abrogate any other regulations previously adopted or issued that are in conflict with any provisions of the zoning code, that's very typical in Georgia, that's very typical probably everywhere, is that zoning regulations, representing probably the best manifestation of the will and vision of the council, control over anything that is at odds with it, so Ms. Fields, and I don't wanna, you know, tell you what their justification was, but Kathy probably did what every other planning and community director in Georgia would do, and that is, if you've got two code provisions, and one of them's in your zoning code, they're gonna defer to your zoning code, because that is considered typically to be the highest and best manifestation of your intention, as opposed to, for, for instance, your subdivision regulations, so if a court was looking at this, number one, they look at that, that statutory language that says zoning control, zoning code controls, they'd look at that, that would be important, and then they would also look at the subdivision regulations and say, okay, well, the subdivision regulations do speak to what you do with AG one, three acre lots on unpaved roads, but it doesn't really speak to what you do in AG one lots with paved roads, oh, but your zoning code does, and therefore, I can readily reconcile those two, zoning code on, uh, AG one on paved roads gets one acre lots, AG one on unpaved roads get three acre lots, easy. The one thing you may wanna keep in mind of, though, is why the difference, why is there a difference on unpaved roads requiring a much bigger buildout versus paved roads requiring a smaller buildout, it's likely, now you tell me, but it's likely, the, the reason is because that, that a paved road can simply handle more stuff, whether it's public safety vehicles, or whether it's infrastructure installation, or whatever it is, it can handle more, because another, uh, mechanism by which courts interpret code provisions is, and you actually have this embodied in your zoning code, so that's good, or you're in your codification of codes, is what is the evil, you know, I'm metaphorical, what is the metaphorical evil that the code is attempting to address, and if the concern is, is that a paved road can handle more improvements than, than an unpaved road, and you've got a, a, a lot that's, that's bounded by both paved and unpaved, well then, of course, gonna say, well then, therefore, the, the evil of the bigger lot is addressed because there's a paved road that accessed that same piece of property, and therefore, once again, we would uphold Kathy's interpretation.
Would, would there be a way, Ken, to actually put, when you have this, where you've got on both sides, let's say, a subdivision that comes off from a paved road, but then it goes, winds back in, and then the back of the subdivision abuts a, a gravel road, would there be a way to do a review, I mean, if it's on a corner, right on the front corner, that may be an easy one, saying, okay, that, but still to do a review process, cause I would say, not, not, not only is it because it can handle more infrastructure and, and vehicles, but I think the people that are living there today, that are, are on those gravel roads, that have the three acres to five acres, if all of a sudden we have property that come back, comes back and abuts it, and all of a sudden, now we've got more density than what they had planned on, what they're surrounded by, could not, if we put a review, if you have one of those circumstances, couldn't we do it as a review?
You, you, you could, Kathy, the, the, the whole point of my explanation was to try and sort of tell you why, the reason why I agree with Kathy, but if the council says, yeah, but there's that difference, you've got the, the Chapter fifty reg and the Chapter sixty-four reg, we wanna, we wanna further expand those, or we wanna provide some additional clarity, of course, the council can do that, you could, you could revise this language as much as you want to, to add any additional sorts of reviews you want to, I'm simply opining why I think she's right.
Let, let me make a statement, then Karen, um, you know, the reality is, the three acre minimum lot on a gravel road, you know, that's existing, and to Ken's point, was very likely put in place years ago because of infrastructure, and it was, back then, I'm sure the county wasn't trying to limit growth or, or density or whatever, they were probably welcoming it, so it was all about the infrastructure, like you said, you know, fast forward now, I think where we have to make the decision, it makes sense, um, you know, structurally for a, a development, or a gravel road to only have three acre minimum lots, because there's less traffic and, and wear interior and whatnot, um, so that totally makes sense, you know, going past that, if you've got a development, a neighborhood coming up to it, and they have paved access, then it kinda nullifies the need, and to your point with Kathy, that's the, probably the, the technical reason why it should be allowed, what we gotta make the decision is, do we wanna use, you know, not really using the, uh, infrastructure argument, but more of a view shed argument, that, you know, we wanna use it as a, uh, way to have less density, and so we've gotta make that decision, that, you know, that's the reason we wanna keep the three acre minimum, and not so much because they're getting access to the gravel road, but because maybe it's a view shed off of the gravel road, or...
And, and Georgia law, Mr. Mayor, is very clear, that aesthetics by itself is a legitimate public purpose by which cities and counties can adopt zoning codes and use their police power protection, so if, for instance, the city council wanted to say, if you own a property on AG one that is adjacent or fronts a unpaved road, irrespective of whether you also have access to or are adjacent to a paved road, your buildout shall be three acres, that would be perfectly fine, perfectly fine.
Cause my point, I, you know...
It'd be aesthetic based, though.
I, I would be okay with that, but I think we've gotta be realistic, and that's the reason we're doing it, we're not going back to the old rule, that the reason that it's three acre minimum was because of, you know, improve, you know, infrastructure, it's, it's because of that, Karen?
No, I, I agree, um, since I was involved with Fulton County way back then, I will tell you, it was because of infrastructure, I mean, that's the reason, and if, it, it was a very clear delineation between whether or not your access was to the unpaid road or the paved road, if your access was to the paved road, one acre, unpaid road, three acres, it was, I mean, it was very plain and simple, now, I'm not saying that's the way we wanna keep it, but that's why it was, I think what you gotta look at is, if you do wanna make changes to protect the rural view shed, then what's to keep somebody from not buying the last twenty feet of property adjacent to an unpaid road, so that their property is, doesn't have access to that unpaid road, and they can still put the lots in, so, you know, you gotta think, if, if you wanna, if you wanna, uh, to get around that, how to do it so that, you know, you know...
You could probably dress that with a buffer, you know, sixty, eighty foot minimum, so that if somebody didn't sell the last twenty feet, they really would have to not sell it, but first, you know...
Yeah, go ahead.
So Ken, what you, you're saying, as it's written now, you, that's why you agree with, with Kathy's interpretation, however, if we change sixty-four four sixteen, you would agree with the interpretation if it, if it was in harmony with, with fifty?
Yeah, absolutely, the best, the best method for interpreting the, a code is the literal words on the piece of paper, so, the, for, the more you enhance it, the more you clarify it, the less me or Kathy have a job of interpreting.
So the reason you agree with it is because of the way the two were written, and if, if those two changed, then you could agree with interpreting, interpreting that way too?
Absolutely.
Well, I would, I would at least at a minimum agree with, with Rick's suggestion of, of at least looking at the, the lots that would back up to, I guess, the, the, the gravel roads being a minimum three acres, but I could also just as easily go with gravel three acres, if it touches it anywhere, no matter where you access it from.
Yeah, I think Karen's point, we'd have to be careful with somebody trying to split things up.
Somebody, yes.
But I, I think it is, I think it's important, um, we have thirteen miles of gravel roads, and, you know, it's kinda nice to drive down the gravel roads, and people enjoy them, and it is kinda funny, I catch myself driving down the gravel road, and, you know, kinda enjoying it, and all of a sudden, you look to one side, and there's a subdivision, and you see, you know, a bunch of houses right there, uh, on, you know, smaller lots and all that, it kinda takes away from it, so, since we only have thirteen miles, and it is a, an asset to the city, I certainly, you know, could support being pretty firm on that.
I think it'd be a fairly modest tweak to actually Section sixty-four four fif- four sixteen, do you think?
You guys good with that? Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, just to make sure what we were saying there, I would be in favor of the lesser of the two in terms of a conflict. So, if the gravel road is there, the gravel road should win out over the paved road.
And I think, when this comes back to us, we've got to clarify that, too. Does that mean, somebody, I'm just making up a number, 100-acre parcel, and it touched the gravel road, does that mean all 100 acres, or, to the point, any lots that are attached to the gravel road? If there's three-acre minimum, we'd probably have to have it.
Well, typically, the video section 64, though, is its development standard, so it's based upon when there's actually a submittal for an LEP, and that's when Kathy's probably starting her review and looking at what's applicable versus what's not. Is that fair?
That's right.
Yeah, so it's not going to matter generically, it's only when they bring in the building permit or the land estate service permit application, and seeing what actually is in play to be developed.
Before we finish talking about this, we've got some public comment, right? So you on the side?
And that's Mr. Cleveland Slater.
Hi, Cleveland Slater, 136670 Bethany Road, Milton. I'm sharing with you the two ordinances, we talked about subdivision and the zoning ordinance, and also included definitions from section 50, where it defines double lots and multiple lot frontage. And we've heard one explanation about the differences in paved roads and unpaved roads with respect to the frontage. But I like to say, the frontage does not go away when you pave a road inside a subdivision, you still have frontage on the unpaved road. I was not aware until, I think, just last night, that our ordinances actually define a double or multi-frontage lot. And with that definition, I think it makes it very clear, the intent is to maintain three-acre minimum lot sizes when a lot is adjacent to a road, unpaved road. We've talked about, I've heard discussion about historically what has happened, or what has been done, what Milton has done. This was a theoretical discussion when we were talking about Ebenezer, but it became real when a recent subdivision was permitted on Nix Road and Freemanville Road, where three lots that are adjacent to a gravel road were permitted at one-acre minimum lots. There may be, that might be a place where a variance would be appropriate, but I think that's a decision the council should make, and look at that particular situation, whether a variance is appropriate at that location, and not a blanket, let's interpret this and make it apply throughout the city, based upon what happened at Freemanville and Nix. Fulton County, who had actually different ordinances than we do, okay? We adopted Fulton, but when we adopted Fulton ordinances, we added some additional language. Fulton did not have the adjacent to language, they do now, but it was added more recently. Fulton County, two times, in 1997, approved subdivision of one-acre lots on gravel roads. There's 19 lots in White Columns, and there are 12 lots in Sable Point of one acre that join, are adjacent to a gravel road. What Fulton County did historically, though, should not set precedent what the city of Milton is going to do. A city of Milton was created in a large part because we were unhappy with the decisions that Fulton County were making, and we wanted local control. And this is one time, I hope, that council will exert local control. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that all the public comment on this item?
Okay. And again, in closing on this item, that's, you know, again, we were stating that we, you know, we're understanding why Fulton County had that ordinance, but we're not necessarily agreeing with it. We're tweaking it to fit what we believe is the right thing for Milton.
May I just get a point of clarification? I'm not clear. Do you want us to draft language that says, just those lots that back up to a gravel road, or any parcel that backs up to a gravel road? I don't think there's a big difference.
You know, again, I think, like I said earlier, this goes to an absolute rule where it could get used against us. I think it totally makes sense, all lots, if it were a certain number of lots, but then again, and we may not have this situation, but, you know, say there was a 100-acre parcel, and, you know, only 20 feet of it touched a gravel road, is that, or is it the adjacent lots? And that's the decision, you know, that's something we're going to discuss.
And it may be that we just do it such that no house can be within a certain number of feet of the gravel road if it's on a paved road. So that way, you don't have a bunch of houses on a paved road backing up to a gravel road. I think that's what we want.
Yeah, and I think the probably answer to that is, definitely have it to where no lot that is adjacent to a gravel road, whether it has paved access or not, is less than three acres.
I think that would be the double frontage type.
So, but then, because if, like I said, if you had a blanket to a parcel, somebody would get creative and say, okay, we're cutting this 20 feet off this parcel, you know, and we're donating that for land, you know, for conservation or something. So is the council okay on that path with the adjacent lots?
I'm not sure Kathy and Ken are together on this. Maybe Ken could just briefly articulate the direction he thinks he's had. Well, what I was going to recommend was, and again, you know, obviously subject to me and Kathy talking about it, was to modify section 64 for 16 to development standards. It currently reads, "Minimum lot area shall be as follows: one acre with frontage on paved road, three acres with frontage on unpaved road. If a lot fronts both an unpaved road and a paved road, the three-acre minimum shall apply."
How do you keep somebody from just not buying the 10 feet adjacent to the unpaid road and still putting them in?
I think you have a problem with the seller not wanting to keep 20 feet of...
Yeah, but it's...
I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, we could go down, because I agree with the counsel from Rotherman, I mean, we've all been doing this long enough to know that people get creative on how to track through.
People get creative, and they'll find a way to, you know, just...
What could you do, your setback?
Well, you could do a larger setback.
Right.
To where that would negate any value that someone would have by having the smaller lots.
I think, well, a couple of thoughts. Number one, I mean, there's probably already requirements right now in the Milton code that you can't create a lot that is unbuildable. And so there's probably some minimum lot requirements right now that would prevent somebody from sort of gaming the system that way, by trying to carve out a little one-by-one foot acre lot. So, I mean, Kathy, I got to believe we have the tools right now to stop that nonsense if it begins to happen.
Right.
That would be my thought. And candidly, I would recommend, let's do this, and then if we see any attempts that are using it, we'll address those.
And just one other, maybe, option, too, whereas to your point, Karen, you could, you know, have maybe a, I'll make up another, yeah, about 100-foot setback or something to a property line. That way, it would be substantial enough that it serves two purposes. The gravel road, you're not going to have homes right up on it. Number two, it's a substantial amount of property, developer has to say, well, gosh, I might as well just do those as three-acre lots, than, you know, if I got to give up 100-foot strip of, you know, 12 acres, or whatever it would be. But, yeah, I think you guys know the intent, what we're talking about.
Okay.
Need to bring something back that we can discuss and decide on.
Yeah. And again, I don't see this as being a very terribly complicated fix at all.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. I'm going to call the next item soon.
Next item, final item, is discussion of equestrian stakeholder group. I do have five public comments.
You know what, I may, if it's okay with the council, let the public make the comments first, because then sometimes we can address things.
I think they were on the gravel roads.
Oh, gravel roads.
Oh, they were?
Yeah, they were all on gravel roads.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, let's...
Yeah, let's go ahead and hear the gravel.
Let's hear them. I'm sorry.
Here we go. And the first is Laura Bentley.
Laura Bentley, 2500 Bethany Church Road. So thank you very much. That, I don't even need to say anything, that discussion was perfect, the intent was captured. I think you know that what you just spoke of saves green space, it reduces our density, and, you know, it's near and dear to my heart. The only thing I don't like about my place is that it's not on a gravel road. So, those neighborhoods are special, and there's more people here to speak about that, so I'll refer to them. Thank you.
Thank you. So if you'll call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Roy Blackwell.
Roy Blackwell, I live at 1365 Nix Road. It is a gravel road. Been there for 23 years. Had every opportunity to move to White Columns, to move to any of the subdivisions around. I love my gravel road. And they're protected. My lot adjoins the construction that's going on, on two sides, the construction on Freemanville and Nix Road. The three lots beside my house, between the Nix Road, are the ones that they're talking about, limiting and putting three houses on. To save on density, to save on the way that the ordinance are written, it's one house for those three acres. I'll be wrapped, I've been there 23 years, and I've had woods all around me, and that's what I intend, to stay there. I can't stress enough of how I want the committee to, the council, to uphold the one house per three acres. I think it's important, and if we're talking about the view, and what people are going to see when they come down the dirt roads that they love in Milton, they're going to see four houses right along that road, right at the end, at Freemanville Road. And I would just like to see you consider upholding the ordinances the way they are.
Okay. Thank you. So if you please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Diane Maloney.
Thank you, guys, for everything you do for Milton. Diane Maloney, 14420 and 14430 Wood Road. I was just going to read my email that I sent to council, just because I wanted to make sure you all heard. Let's see, "As a resident, I want of the few gravel roads left in the city of Milton. I would like you all to know that I'm in full support of your maintaining the three-acre minimum lot size for properties in the city of Milton on or adjacent to gravel roads. The gravel roads are part of the Milton Trail System, and there is a 15 mile an hour limit, speed limit, on Wood Road, and I can tell you firsthand, on Wood Road, that it's heavily used by a lot of Milton residents. I mean, you turn off of Freemanville onto Philip Circle, and there's always cars parked there. Lots of residents use it as a park system, so it's definitely not just enjoyed by the people that live on gravel roads, but by everybody. Let's see, what else did I want to say? The Milton High School cross-country teams have trained on Wood Road since we've moved there 15 years ago, and this part of the trail system, like, the other gravel roads are a slice of heaven, the very essence of Milton, and it's a Milton we all love. It's mostly horse farms, rural, and it's safe, and it's the Milton that you said you guys would protect if you were elected, so I hope you uphold this. And, let's see, I just wanted to make one other comment, too, about the use of the gravel road for the infrastructure. I think people would still use the gravel road, even if there was subdivisions on the end. You can't just preclude that, because there's a paved road that people would not use gravel road, because I still think it would definitely impact the use of the gravel road, so just think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Cindy, if you'll call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Brian Maloney.
Brian's still here?
I'm listening.
He does the same work? He'll do what you say, right? All right, Cindy, next.
Next one, last one is Jason Blackwell.
Hello, I'm Jason Blackwell. I live at 1365 Nix Road. I just want to say that I believe that three-acre ordinance is a great thing, because when you drive up and down my road, and you pass the houses in White Columns, takes away from that. And I plan on inheriting my house, which sits right there, and if three houses come up next to it, it takes away from my personal enjoyment of my home, because this is where I've grown up. Another thing is that they bulldoze before the erosion fences came up, and there's a creek that runs under Freemanville right through my backyard, and now there's a bunch of debris from the storms that's in my yard now. So, that's another issue there.
Okay. Thank you, Jason, for speaking, and I think there might be a little hint there, staff could check something out. Thank you. Anybody else, Cindy?
That's all, sir.
Okay. Call the next item.
Discussion of Equestrian Stakeholder Group, Mr. Steve Koffler.
I don't really know that my name is appropriate to be on there. I know we were talking about this since last year's council retreat. Councilmember Coons asked me to add this to today's agenda, so I turned that over.
Could we start, I was like, council member could speak, and basically, you know, as we have been working on the past, and said, where are we with it at this point? What is, I know, last time we talked, staff was working on, where are we, or not, you know, at what point are we?
Our communications manager was in the process of looking at that as part of her strategic plan, and then councilmember Coons brought it up a couple of meetings ago, and I think it was time that we just make sure we achieve alignment.
All right. Right, Kathy, okay. You want to say anything?
Yeah, I mean, obviously with, you know, being here in the city, and our logo being a horse, and so much of what we have promised our citizens about what is rural, I think a lot of our equestrian aspect of our community has been at risk for a long time. And there's a lot of ways to achieve an objective by trying to maintain that very aspect of it. Now, granted, granted, there's many aspects of what is rural within the city, but I do believe that if we do fight for the equestrian aspect of our community, as many cities in the United States have done, such as Lexington, for example, we can achieve at least a better spirit towards what it is we're trying to become. And obviously, we're facing a strong economic condition that is driven mainly by having quality schools in here, but we also need to help our equestrian nature, if that is something we want to promote. And in doing so, I think that, I think that we need to have a process in place that actually brings ideas forth, that will help equestrian-based businesses, equestrian-based property, and promotion of the equestrian spirit within the city of Milton. That involves people, that involves the people that actually have the horses, that have the land, to get together and have those communications. What I would like to see, in some format, is this council to decide or instruct staff, perhaps doing a resolution, or a set of rules for a body, whether it be like the planning commission, where each of us appoint someone, or a body like Milton Groves Green, where we appoint a head, and then they have multiple people underneath it. I'd prefer, long-term, that it was a body on its own, that it come before the council to bring ideas, but it might need us to each appoint someone at the beginning to bring people together that can have ideas brought together in a meeting environment, and come to us as a council with ideas for that objective. So that was the idea that I wanted to have with the discussion of creating an equestrian stakeholder group. I think it's something that we do need to have, where I'm willing to talk, is whether we have, how we want to format, what that body would look like, and what it should, what the rules ought to be, whether it be like a Milton Groves Green, or whether we want to be as formal as a planning commission. Or maybe the historical preservation commission might be something, too. The ideas I do have is, you know, maybe if we have individuals that we appoint, you know, some requirements, such as they own a horse, whether they're a property owner as well, is something we can debate, live in the city, but like the historical preservation commission, not subject to districts, where we can pick anybody within the city that we would choose. And just my thoughts.
You know, and those are great thoughts, because sometimes there is a disconnect in what, I forget the number, percentage of people in Milton that actually own a horse, but it's, you know, two or three percent.
Six percent.
Six. It was a seven at one point, but with those other 93, 95% folks, or whatever, what they want to see, and what most people want to see, is they do want to see the equestrian part of Milton, although they have really no connection, or no financial interest, or whatever. And so a lot of times, and, you know, rightfully so, drive down, say, oh, we're losing another horse farm, but they don't realize that property owner and horse farm, this is paying the bills and the taxes and the upkeep and all that, so what would be good about this is, if we could comprise this committee, as Matt said, of people that are actually on that side. It's a small percentage. We would have to do it, no districts, but at large, because there's not, you know, we'd have to spread. But maybe that group... Because there's not, you know, we'd have to spread. But maybe that group that actually, you know, are the equestrian community could get together and come to us with things that might benefit them. Whereas the regular public wants us to go, well, you need to save the horse farm and you need to do this. But the reality is, we need the horse community, equestrian community to come to us to say, this is what would really help us. This is what would really improve, you know, the equestrian community here and enable us to stay or attract more, more equestrian stuff. So I think it's, it would be really good to get input from that, that group. And maybe it's, you know, not necessarily a planning commission type group, but a, a citizens group that we put together that comes to us with recommendations and, you know, is, is a part of our other groups to, you know, work with the planning commission and things as future development goes. But, you know, I'm certainly open to that, Karen.
Yeah, I would love to have the group come to really do some thinking as what kind of incentives might help keep the horse farms in Milton. Because I'm a strong believer in, you know, if you want people to act a certain way, you either incentivize them to act that way, you require them. And you get a whole lot more with honey than you do with vinegar. So, you know, I'd much rather find ways to try to incentivize the behavior we want, which is to keep the horse farms.
Yep.
I think the discussion not only should center around how to preserve what we have here, but how do we really promote the industry and even attempt to expand it somehow?
Yeah.
I think there's a lot of, a lot of folks out here, and of course, they come from different parts of the industry. And I wouldn't want to limit it just to seven folks on a board like that. It should have some structure, I believe, but I think it needs to be all inclusive. Let's bring in all, all members of the equestrian community and so.
Perhaps we could appoint seven, you know, a minimum of seven that are appointed and then.
I would, I would say formally, we would have seven, but then they would bring in all the rest, you know, just like the seven of us, we listen to everybody.
I think you'll get more participation if everybody has appointed one person and that person knows that they're appointed to show up.
But their job would be to reach the top community. Right. Anybody else? Let me make sure I understand, because Rick and I are sort of in a different situation because, you know, District 3 is pretty small. And, and while I won't say there's no horse pastures, I'm sure there are horse owners.
There's one, there's one on Bethany.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
It's a toy horse.
Yeah, it's pretty small. But anyway, so I'd be in favor of having some flexibility in terms of where we. I think we said we'd do it at large. Okay. You can pick anybody, you know, probably the majority of the seven will be probably one or two districts.
Right. I think this other thing, whenever we form any new committee, I think it would be key to really look at what are the goals and objectives that we want this group to do. I think Karen hit on a good point, too. I mean, what can we do to incentivize? Are there things that we can work on? Or those would be the folks that probably could give us the best ideas, knowing what they face and how we could possibly help them.
I'm wondering if the right and the fairest way to do this would be, help me out here, Ken or staff, if each council member chooses a representative. And obviously, you're going to have to reach out to folks and make sure that they're, you know, they're willing and want to be involved. And then have kind of a kickoff meeting where they hash out some of the goals and with staffs help come up with a list and then present it back to us and we can tweak it. These are the goals. Here's the answers we want. Here's what we want you guys to work on.
Sure.
Rather than trying to do that first and then getting volunteers, I think we'd get more input from folks that are actually on the equestrian side.
But maybe an idea, too, is if you want to, if you want to start that out, actually make it more of a community, community meeting. So it's more inclusive from the front end and then listen to what people say before we actually get into the formal appointment of different people. Just an idea.
And just, just one thing to add, and again, all this sounds, it sounds great, but just be mindful that if it is a city-created committee, then it is subject to the Meetings Act and agendas notice, maybe a little bit of staff time. You've got to run mid minutes. You've got to have 20, 48 hour meeting summaries, just some of the extra layers of, I hate to say it, this bureaucracy that they go along with that.
But I think the good thing is that will actually help promote it and awareness, you know, that the public can have access to that. So I, I would recommend, and you guys open to any comments on this, though, that maybe we set up where everybody thinks about and talks to some folks, picks a person, and then have a meeting with them and then come up with some criteria that you want them. Because again, like I said in the beginning, everybody, I'd say 99% of the people in Milton love the equestrian theme of the park, but only six or seven percent actually get it. So those are the people that I think need to come up with the things that are important and the guidelines and the, and the goals. So does that make sense? You guys, staff, have any recommendation on that?
I can throw to that, yeah.
Okay.
I think we're ready to roll.
So maybe you guys can reach out to us, but everybody keep in mind, somebody that you may want to pick on that, so. All right.
Right.
Okay, we'll adjourn.